It is seven o'clock, I'm going to call this meeting to order. If you'd please bow your heads with me for an invocation and then we'll follow that with the pledge. Dear God, we pray that you will bless and guide us through this meeting. Help us have productive discussions that will broaden our perspectives. Help us to resolve any disputes gracefully and find principles that we can agree on. Help us generate good plans that are practical, sustainable, and easily implemented. Guide us towards the best way to take action to accomplish our goals. In your name we pray, amen. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is citizen comments. If you would like to speak tonight and you have not yet filled out a form, if you would please do so and get it to the city secretary. I do want to point out that there, that the only public hearing on the agenda tonight is item 5.3 and the intent is that we will table that, we'll have discussion when we get there. But so I want to make it clear that if you'd like to speak tonight, it needs to be during citizen comments. There's no public hearing tonight. There was not advertised, the advertised public hearing was advertised that it would be tabled until May. Item 5.3 is the only hearing. I would also just remind you, we are going to time citizen comments tonight. There's obviously a lot of you in the room and we want to make sure we hear everyone who wants to be heard. So we are going to limit the citizen comments to five minutes apiece as advertised. So, alright. I will call on you and I apologize if I mispronounce your last name or first name or anything else. The first one I have is Mike Hatcher? Sorry. And if you could please state your name and address for me.
My name, my name is Mike Hatcher, 175 FM 550. Tonight I'm speaking on item 5.2, I believe. Nope. The alcohol piece is not what I'm speaking on. Somehow, I don't know what happened on this site plan. As a commercial developer, there's some major holes in this plan. I don't know how it got through. It is something that you guys can revisit. The main issues are safety. So, on this site plan to maximize square footage for the developer, we're going to use an ingress and egress road, which legal access to the property owner is unclear at best. But either way, we don't park along an ingress and egress road. Those are 30 foot wide. They're meant for traffic to go into developments and then once we're in the developments, then we have driving lanes to give you access to the parking. This particular road on top of that, if all the legalities were there, you want to dump a drive-through right into a merge lane on a highway, that's going to be an issue. Our preliminary talks with Tech Dot, that road's not going to be allowed to be there anyways. If you look at most modern developments, minimum of 450 foot from a major intersection, so Tech Dot controls state highways. You're going to be 450 foot off the edges. You'll have ingress and egress roads that do not have parking on them. Once you're in those, then it is on the developer to put driving lanes, which by law have to be 24 foot wide, not 30. And then they can do their parking off of it. And so, the safety, I mean, trying to exit on a lane immediately out of a drive-through into a merge lane, that, that right there at 205, at 550, is going to be a merge lane for people getting onto 205. So, there's a good chance it's a yield sign, not a stop, light, you know, for the, for the merge. Just a lot of risk for our citizens. I am, I live in this community, I have lived in Rockwall County for 25 years. I am developing a significant portion of this intersection, just being candid, I'm honest and up, most of you have met me at other PNZs. There's a vision for this intersection that is McLennan-Chisholm. This development is not it. I would encourage you to look at previous developments from this developer. I would encourage you to look at other successful developments and how they're laid out throughout the city of Rockwall and other cities. And you'll see what we're talking about. If you go look at, you know, we're going to have a Brooksers there, if you go look at Fresh. Starbucks is a major player. They don't have direct access to the highway, to the service road, or to 551. Their traffic comes in on an ingress and egress road, 30 foot wide, that traffic then flows into their property. It's very typical of a development. So, safety is a major concern. Aesthetics, because of House Bill 2439, kind of limited on what control you guys have, flow and access you absolutely have. Really determining legal rights before we approve a sight line, a sight plan, it's pretty important. Because once grounds moved and buildings are built, it's a tough thing to fix. So, I would highly encourage this council to listen to the citizens, think about this plan, look at other current development. You have some developers in this county outside of me that have developed some amazing properties that I'm sure would be happy to consult with you to make sure what we're building is a nice piece of property. Thanks so much for your time.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Up next I have Bev Stevens.
Good evening. My name is Bev Stevens and I live at 279 Partridge Drive. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to speak this evening. I am here also to speak on item 5.2. First, I just want to say, I'm a little confused about the odd documents that were afforded to us in the agenda posting. There is a letter from Carmen Sloan that leads me to believe this is the information they are asking you for tonight, which is, the purpose of this SUP is to illustrate the proposed retail building and most especially, the restaurant with an order ahead drive-up window. Nowhere in this letter from him does it address consumption of onsite alcohol. In your staff report from your contracted planner, he states, the applicant is requesting approval of a specific use permit for a restaurant with an order ahead drive-up window and the ability to serve alcohol for on-premise consumption. So unless you all know something that we don't, that was not shared with us in the packet, nowhere do I see that the developer is asking for onsite consumption, say, of alcohol. As you know, as I spoke the last time, that is a very big concern for me, especially out a drive-through window. This piece of property is nowhere near big enough for what they are proposing, let alone a drive-through window that you possibly could pass alcohol through. But, as you know, onsite consumption alcohol cannot happen without a citizen election. This city has not held that election. So, if you choose to put onsite consumption in this specific use permit, I think you're opening a can of worms that you might not be able to close again. So I would encourage you to deny this specific use permit because the drive-through window is not, is not wanted by anybody here except possibly the developer. If they want carryout food and call-ahead orders, I'm not too lazy to get out of my car and walk in and get the order myself. I do not have to drive through. And I do not ever want to see alcohol sold through a drive-through window in McLennan-Chisholm. Thank you.
Up next I have, is it John Trust?
There we go. Okay, my name is John Tauss, 216 Devonport, Rockwall. I just want to talk about 5.1 and Trilogy. Just want to appeal to everybody's common sense here in planning and zoning. I have yet to see any improvements regarding water and the supply of water here at McLennan-Chisholm. We were all rationed last summer, so I'm not sure how we're considering developments that not only, we're adding developments that we can't supply, but increasing density that's not even part of the comprehensive plan. Just makes zero sense. I understand there's further development plans now around here to decrease their lot size too, so I'm not sure what's going on, how the wheels have come off the track here, but I just want to appeal to your senses to get them back on, focus on what's important to the city, focus on what the mayor elected or was elected and ran on about low density, high quality. Okay? Mr. Huffines came in here two weeks ago, whatever it is, and started talking about trailer parks, apartments, and all kinds of other stuff. Very disrespectful, uncalled for, and again, we want people to represent us, represent our community, and we want high quality, low density. Thank you.
Next I have, is it Gina Maris?
Hello. Gina Manus, 107 Chaney Place. So I've just made a list of points and just to, for the sake of time and so that I won't ramble, we'll just stick to that and respect your time as well. Also speaking on the Trilogy 5.1 as a concerned homeowner in the area. First of all, the TOMA, T-O-M-A violations committed by the city of McLennan-Chisholm during negotiations with the developer and after that have been upheld by the judge. So, the lawsuit is still ongoing and none of our concerns about water have been addressed. As already pointed out, any recommendations or votes need to be postponed. You know, I will edit here and expound. Who would give the keys to a car to a three-year-old? And folks, we haven't been faithful with what we have. We have not taken care of our water needs. I think you all have pictures of your backyards with huge cracks in them that you paid a lot of money to have because of a lack of water. We were in Colorado when everybody was told to shut off their water and our sprinkler systems were on once a week. This is ridiculous for our kind of community. We moved here thinking it was a common sense community and land and beauty, and to simply throw this in disregard and violating, first of all, the ability even sit in on this meeting and for Huffines to come in here and bully pretty much what he said and speak down and threaten, first of all, McLennan-Chisholm's agreement is moot point because it was in violation to the law. So, number one, this has to be postponed till that gets straightened out, number one. Do not recommend for them to move forward on this. We need to pause, just breathe, get our water shortage fixed first. We're all about, you know, beautiful growth, have another, have another addition, but let's be ready for it. Instead of putting the cart literally before the horse, we are putting houses out there before we even take care of our own homes. And you guys live here and you, you feel that. So, get the dollar signs out of their eyes and think common sense. Let's take care of our community first. Citizens' rights to open government were violated to get it moved into our community. Employees of Trilogy went into executive sessions that, that should have never happened. So we need to scratch that table and say, whoa, let's back up, let's do this in accordance with the TOMA and then see what we come up with when we're all, we all get to be a part of this as, as law states. There were many, many examples in the recent hearings that, that McLennan-Chisholm violated the Open Meetings Act and, which means the public was denied their statutory rights to open government and they emphasized that members of the public have an interest in open government. We were denied that. Showed extensive calculations of cost to Heath and, and other areas from the developments, including 70% of the traffic from this development using Horizon Road and not to mention this road, increasing that usage by 10,317 plus trips a day and 3,000, 3,765,705 plus a year, 385% increase. And we haven't taken care of our water yet. Going to, to, technically, these original negotiations were in violation to the TOMAs should be thrown out and resubmitted according to TOMA. Number two, no solutions accomplished, have no solutions accomplished to the existing water shortage for current homeowners. Huffines admitted at the last PNZ meeting that RCH has told them that probably can't serve any more houses. We keep hearing about McLennan-Chisholm going to take over RCH as if that's going to fix anything. In fact, Mayor Short had a Chamber of Commerce meeting recently stated that MC's plans are to take over RCH water and then go direct to NTWSD and get our water direct from them. What he's talking about is becoming a member city. For everybody who doesn't know about that, number one fact, RCH gets water from Rockwall. Rockwall gets their water from North Texas Municipal Water District because they are a member city. A member city that along with 10 other founding member cities started NTMWD more than six decades ago. So many cities have, so many cities have they let in since then? How many cities have they let in since then? Just three. 22 years ago, just three. Okay? Richardson in 1973, Allen in 1998, Frisco in 2001.
I'm going to ask you to wrap it up, please.
All right. To become one of these, it takes a lot of money and other member city has to vote yes for a new city to join. So 13 other cities, including Plano, McKinney, would, and would have to all vote yes to McLennan-Chisholm. Like that's really going to happen, all right? And of course, we don't want the Terrell whole thing because then Terrell would be in our backyard.
Thank you, ma'am. Your time is up.
So, anyway, that's my point. Let's take care of the water here first, table everything, please submit that for your sake and ours. Appreciate all your time.
Okay. Next I have Oscar Lozano. You, you don't want to speak? Okay. Okay. David Black.
The lady spoke really well and that's what I was going to speak about. That was sort of finish which she said.
Can you, can you state your name and address, please?
Name is, as you said, David Black. I'm at 1419 Sienna Lane. To complete the thought on the water is, Terrell was going to, was one of the suggestions. The question is, where do they get their water from? If we're going to add, say, 5,000 people just for them and 10,000 for the other development and Terrell itself is only about 20,000 people, they just miraculously have a lot more water? So, there's so many problems with the plans which may be non-existent. For instance, the thing they were going to vote on tomorrow, you might have said that was going to be delayed, I'm not sure. City Council is to be voting on an agreement concerning water, you know, with Trilogy. Concerning water, it says, see the development agreement. So I went to the development agreement, 5.1 is a sentence. It says, this will be determined at a later time. So obviously, back in late 2021, they knew there's a water issue. And there's still a water issue. I know some people are working on it, but I have no idea how it's going to be solved and hopefully they're geniuses that can do it. But until then, I don't think we should bother changing any zoning for anyone for such a huge development as that. It's gigantic. The stress to our infrastructure is horrible. Even the wastewater discussion in the development agreement went through several possibilities but really concluded, we'll do a temporary wastewater, you know, thing. So, it's all very haphazard and I don't know if you can not zone just because it destroys our comprehensive plan, that it's against everything the citizens want. I don't know, the council, you know, is the final word on that, so, good luck. Please vote to deny it.
Thank you, sir. I've got, I've just got one more here. I just want to remind anybody, if anybody else wants to speak, I do need you to fill out a form. But with that, I'll go ahead and call on Bob Steinhegen. We had, we had a member that needed to step away for just a second, so we're going to, we had a member that needed a break for just a second, so if you could just wait a minute.
Can you hear me?
I can.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Bob Steinhegen, 304 Pleasant Hill Drive. One of the things that is interesting to me is that there are people who tell me that I'm against development because I want to uphold our city's standards. Another thing I hear a lot is, you know, I'm for property rights, I'm for landowner rights. And, and what is meant by that? Because I consider myself someone who believes in landowner rights as well. I believe that when a developer comes into a city and he sees, sees the laws that are on the books before he purchases that property, he's got to determine whether or not he can live within the standards there. For instance, my wife and I had lived in Dallas, I've never lived in an HOA until we moved to Quell Creek here in McLennan-Chisholm. And before we moved in, before we bought our house, the first thing I did was I looked at the city's laws. Then I looked at this, what's called the CCNRs, covenants, conditions, and restrictions, the things that we can do and the things that we can't do. And I decided for myself whether or not I could live under those standards. Is, are my rights being violated because I willfully came and chose to live in an HOA? No. I could have chosen not to purchase there. Is a developer's rights being infringed upon because they want to basically circumvent the ordinances that are written, that were written for a reason to protect our wide-open spaces and more rural lifestyles? So, I, I really am troubled by the fact that this, this annexation requires a public hearing and that public hearing is, is for a purpose. Because a public hearing comes before a decision, that's the purpose of a public hearing. But if you read the development agreement, the annexation is fait accompli. It's required. There's nothing we can do about it. So, why have a public hearing? It's simply an act of, of process? It shouldn't be that way. The first question I would ask and get answered before I would move to approve or deny this is, how is that legal? How is it legal to force a city, or for a city council to force something before a public hearing has even happened at planning and zoning? And tomorrow night, the city council is going to be considering a, a services agreement for the annexation services agreement. Now, here's the question that I have on that. You've not seen this, the city council's going to vote on it before they annex. Now my question is, if you annex property into the city, don't those citizens become part of the, citizens of the city of McLennan-Chisholm? So, why would they, why are they deserving of, of public services that the rest of us aren't? Why, why do they get a police department? Says here that we have, we're required to have a police department, that, that we are required to have McLennan-Chisholm Police Department services for them? How is that possible? Why would we agree to that? Before you would act tonight, I would get some of these questions answered and tonight I'm asking that you postpone your decision for one more, for one more meeting. Take time, be cautious, make sure that the steps that you take are, are thoughtful and considerate of all actions, legal and for the community. Thank you all very much for your service.
Thank you, Mr. President. Okay. Up next, I have a David Larson. If you could step to this mic over here, sir.
David Larson, 3079 West FM 550. I spoke in front of y'all several weeks back and thank all of y'all for listening to our grievances and how we felt about what was happening. I didn't think anybody was gonna be able to speak tonight, 'cause I feel like it's just a done deal. I'm currently involved in a lawsuit with HEAT against McLendon-Chisholm. And this week, coming week, I believe on schedule for Saturday, I am being deposed. I have to do a deposition, and I am being deposed by the Huffines and by McLendon-Chisholm. All of y'all are probably not even aware of that. Why? Because I have come to these meetings and I've spoke my mind and my frustration of what's happened and, and this bad deal that has been made. It's a safety thing. And part of this deposition that I have to talk about, they're gonna ask me over and over and over and over, you didn't receive it? Anything back in 2021? Any of the notices? Anything about, anything going on? I'm gonna say, no, 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 no. And they're gonna grill me, grill me, grill me, grill me. And there's nothing like a deposition. As a former police officer who testified hundreds of times in trials, it doesn't even compare to being, doing a deposition. I've had one before. It's not a pleasant time. But I'm ready for it. It's a bad deal. Bad deals happen. We had a president one time who made one of the worst deals ever. Thank God we had a President Donald J. Trump. I can't do that deal.
Britta Jo.
Britta Jo, 256 Stevens Road, Rockwall, Texas, 75032. I love this planning and zoning commission. You guys have always treated us with such kindness and respect. And as someone, as someone who is also facing deposition tomorrow by your city and Huffines, which I never thought I would have to face through just being a neighborhood activist and trying to protect the reasons why I moved out here, I wanted to share some things that I've learned that really concerned me. So, two weeks ago, when Huffines spoke, he mentioned that they had been in conversation with the city for about two years figuring this deal out. So I went back and looked at the city council's meetings. The first time Huffins shows up at your city council and presents in a public setting is August 24th, and the development agreement gets signed two months later at the end of October. So I don't know what was happening there, because the first time we as a public got introduced to this was in October 24th of 2021. So I think you all should know that, because I believe that's gonna end up tying into the Toma violations, which are violations of not allowing Texas citizens' rights to see open government happening. Okay? So you guys need to know that. And I keep hearing that the lawsuit isn't happening. People keep saying, it's over. We've been told by certain members on the opposition, which is fine. I know we're divided in the city. That's cool. Everybody cares about this. But saying that somehow it's over is not true. I am being deposed tomorrow over this and another citizen of your city. It is still very much involved. On top of that, I have, after going out and seeing Inspiration, because I happen to drive past it on Fridays, it's beautiful. I agree with Huffines. His developments are amazing. The problem is the water. If they can figure out the water and do this by the law, I think we'd all be for it. Okay? The water piece. I went and figured out what it takes to become a member city. It is a really big deal, and it does not happen often. Raulette has applied. Fait has applied. None of them have been accepted in. If you do become a member city, the North Texas Water District pays for all of the hookups for the city. They come in and build the infrastructure for you. That's why, if Huffines is involved in this deal, he wants that for y'all. But here's what happens. If you annex the land and you don't become a member city, the city is on the hook because you own RCH, you will now have a public water company, and you will be by law required to provide those hookups to Huffines. So if he doesn't have this in writing, that you guys are gonna be a member city and you annex that land, you're all gonna be on the hook for that. And he can just sue you to make you do it. So please, slow down. If he really, if this member city thing's gonna work, awesome. If Huffines is somehow gonna fund that, and he knows somebody with the North Texas Water District is gonna get you in, have it in writing. Just cover your bases, 'cause there's a lot of loose, fast stuff flying around, and it has been for two years. Thank you.
Okay. I do not have any more forms. Is there anyone else that wants to speak? Okay. Then we will close citizen comments. We'll move on to item 4.1. Consider approval of the minutes of the March 21st, 2023 Planning and Zoning Meeting. Can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the meetings as written.
Second.
Is there any discussion or corrections to the minutes? Okay. Then I will take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm curious.
All right. We will move on to item 5.1. Discussion and action regarding approval of the application of MC Trilogy Texas LLC requesting initial zoning of PD Plan Development District and updating the comprehensive plan and zoning map for two, sorry, for two tracts of land to be annexed into the city of McLendon-Chisholm and approximately 441.818 acre tract of land and an approximately 133.325 acre tract of land, generally located north of FM 550 and east of West Pullen Road and situated in the Jay Simmons Survey Abstract Number 202, the WW Ford Survey Abstract Number 80, and the A. Rodriguez surveys, survey Abstract Number 231 in Rockwall County, Texas, identified by county ID numbers 115324 and 115325. And also being a portion of the property described in a deed to the Hodges Ranch Partners Limited as recorded in Volume 3828, Page 322 as document number 00319510 in the official public records of Rockwall County, Texas. Zoning of the subject property will amend the official zoning map of the city of McLendon-Chisholm. I, Mr. Coker, I'm gonna call on you, but I, I think you'll say this as well, but I do just wanna remind the commission that we are discussing the zoning, not the annexation. The annexation, we, we have no control or input into the annexation. What we are discussing here tonight is the zoning of this property. So, Mr. Coker, if you could give us our second opinion?
Yes, ma'am. The applicant has asked for approval of a Plan Development District for a property that is currently in the extraterritorial jurisdiction of the city. I've reviewed the application. I've reviewed the content of the application. It's consistent with the development agreement that was approved by the city council in October of 2021. It's consistent with the concept plan that's a part of the, the development agreement. And thirdly, it's consistent with the preliminary plat that was approved for the property in the extraterritorial jurisdiction previously by this commission and council. Staff recommendation is approval. It's consistent with the rule sheet.
I will entertain a motion, and then we can have discussion.
A motion to, discussion or?
If I have a motion to discuss.
I make a motion to discuss the following.
No, no, no. We need a motion for how it's gonna be.
Either for...
We need a, we need a motion for it to happen.
Madam Chair?
Yeah.
If I may?
Sure.
You'll need, you're correct. You'll need a motion second before you have the discussion.
Correct. Yeah.
And I'm not telling you what the motion's gotta be.
Right. But we need a motion.
It needs to be a motion about the zoning.
I make a motion that we table this till next meeting, because we do have a lot of questions that are not answered.
Quiet, please. Can I get a second? Is there a second?
I'll second.
Please. 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 Thank you. Okay. Let's, who would like to speak first? This is discussion.
Some of the questions that I would like answered before we can make approval or disapproval are, including the following things the citizens had mentioned. Of course, mostly is the water. Where is the water gonna come from? We need stuff in writing. Last meeting, there was nothing set. I've asked that question before, and there was not anything that was definite. I was told I was going to get answers, and I have not gotten any answers. So until that's fully resolved in writing, I cannot in good faith approve or deny this until we get answers. Also, the litigation stuff is still happening. We have to get that resolved, however way it works out. We cannot make a decision one way or the other without the courts first. The court should rule before we make a decision on the following. Also, the wastewater treatment plant. How is the wastewater, how is sewage gonna work out? Those are questions that I don't know. Maybe it's somewhere that I haven't seen yet, but I personally need to know those answers first before I can make an honest, educated decision. Whether to approve or disapprove, I just need answers first. Secondly, or additionally, I guess this, this has to do with tomorrow's meeting, but the service agreement in tomorrow's meeting does say the McLendon-Chisholm Police Department. I don't know if that was worded in a way where the development is just going to receive police services the same as we do? Or does that imply that we have to provide a McLendon-Chisholm Police Department, which we do not currently have?
Daniel, I'd ask you to direct your questions to staff.
Okay. I'm sorry.
That's okay. And then let them answer them, or, and we need to stay on topic.
Okay. Anyways, the point being is that I would like to have questions answered before I can make a decision.
Mr. Coker, are you able to answer any of those questions or where we're at?
The only one I can answer is that the service agreement is not a subject for discussion by planning and zoning.
Any more questions for staff? Brad, any questions?
Mr. Coker, we have, we have discussed this in the past, and, and one of the things, it was brought up at a previous meeting, but is there, if we were going to do an approval, make it contingent on having the water agreement in place before we're agreeing to that?
The commission can apply any conditions that they see fit for a recommendation of approval.
Any questions or discussions? You're on.
I, I also, there's so many unanswered questions of things that were brought up tonight. Again, as, as our chairperson said, we, as the planning and zoning, are looking at a narrow items. If it complies with the concept plan, the plant plan, use plan, those type of things. We are not seeing anything from a standpoint of annexation. That is totally city council. That is not on our purview to do. As much as I would like to make a motion, because a lot of the things do comply with the comprehensive plan, future land use, the different things that, that we look at as a, as a planning and zoning commission and that we are charged. However, there are so many unanswered questions and so many things that are still undecided. I think we would do ourselves, as well as the citizens of McLendon-Chisholm, an injustice by making a recommendation at this point in time without those questions being answered, plus without those questions becoming a, a document that can be incorporated for the city, city council to look at. That, I mean, that's from, I, I hear what you're saying, and, and I agree with you. I live right on 550 myself, and there's a lot of questions that I have. And I was, I'm really kinda surprised that the developer chooses not to address any of the issues that were brought up. Some of them, I think, are quite serious, and some of them, I think, the citizens deserve an answer on them, gentlemen, I really do. And you're sitting there, you have an opportunity to speak, but you chose not to. And I just don't understand why you would not answer the, the citizens that, that you're gonna be, you know, working with.
So, Mr. Rhodey? We, we can, we can ask the developer questions as part of our discuss, as part of our discussion.
I would like you to answer some of the questions.
Yeah.
I would, I would, we, we as the commission, we as a commission would like some of the answers to some of those questions. What about water? What about safety? What about all the other things? Microphone over there, please.
As you know, please state your name and your address.
Philip Huffines, 8200 Douglas Avenue, Dallas, Texas. And, and the question, if you could repeat, if you're asking about water, or, as you know, and maybe you don't know, but we've been meeting with, for the last couple of years of RCH, High Point, Terrell, and Rockwall, and everybody about water. So, I can tell you anything you wanna know about the water. And High Point, as of last week, said that they could serve 300 to 500 units with the line that comes right here to City Hall. It's a 12-inch line, and they would be glad to do that. In addition, they said that if we spend another $6 or $8 million, they would provide additional water for the development. So, the question for us is, where is the best source of water for the development? McLendon-Chisholm has no source of water, as everybody knows. We've been working hard for, for literally 18 months to get McLendon-Chisholm in the water business, if that's what the city council chooses to do. We have already petitioned the state to decertify RCH from this property, because we can serve this, we can serve the development with either High Point, we can serve the development by going all the way to Terrell, and we can serve possibly with Blackland. All of those are options, and all of those, and those water service corporations are, have been talked to, and we've got the engineer right here to tell you anything you wanna know about the water. And the backup position is, we can drill a well and serve that well produce somewhere around 700 gallons a minute, and doesn't need to be treated, and we can serve probably 700 homes with one well. So, we have the ability to provide our own water at any time we want. Now, whether or not McLendon-Chisholm chooses to get in the water business, as you know, RCH said they would acquiesce their CCN to McLendon-Chisholm, and that's been going on for months. There seems to be some issues going on at RCH about actually making that happen. We don't know why. We don't know why RCH has been that way. We stepped back for the last eight months because RCH entered into an agreement that our, that McLendon-Chisholm could take over the water service. What McLendon-Chisholm's been trying to determine from RCH is, what is the cost of that? How much do you owe? What do we have to do? And RCH has not been providing that information. So, our goal is not to be in the water business. Our goal is to have a very nice, the nicest development in all of Rockwall County and to get water. And if we have to drill a well, we will. It's not the most economical situation. Going all the way to Terrell is millions and millions of dollars, but if we have to do that, then that's what we have to do. So that's, that's the situation on water. And you asked about sewer. Situation on sewer, there's a gravity line that comes in at 2,500 feet, 5,000 feet from the property. The city of McLendon-Chisholm has the rights to produce, with Rockwall, it's Rockwall's line, I think, 15,000 housing units into that line. And we have a will-serve letter from McLendon-Chisholm that they'll allow us to tap into that line, and we'll have a force main from our development to that gravity service line. As you guys probably know, because the audience likes to focus on it, we did apply for a wastewater treatment permit. That was a backup position, but for some reason, we didn't get access to that sewer line, which is right there, and McLendon-Chisholm... And McLendon Chisholm says, no, you can have access to that sewer line. So, we said, fine. We terminated the wastewater treatment plant permit and have no longer been pursuing that for about a year. And so, that's the water and the sewer. If you'd like to ask the engineer a question about the water, he'll be able to answer it in great detail. Matt, you want to come up and just answer a question on the water, please?
Yes. I'm Matt Atkins, T. Nolling, P. Kings, 825 Waters Creek, Suite M300, Allen, Texas, 75013. Glad to answer any further details on the water that you have, that Mr. Huffines did not, as he mentioned. We've spoken with all three of those providers and all of them are just the viable, as well as the well we are working on, well water.
My question, or your statements, you gave us a lot of possibilities and a lot of maybes. When will we know some actualities? When, when will we be able to say, okay, you have contracted with, or you can tell us that XYZ is going to be your provider, so not only can it reassure our minds that we're making the right decision, but also assuring our, the public's mind that it is the right decision? I mean, we're talking of possibilities and this, and this, and this. But how about some actualities? When, when can we know that, okay, Trilogy will have this water supply?
Well, I think from the city's standpoint and from the citizen's standpoint, is Trilogy going to affect their water system and their access to water? That's the question. It's not, they don't care, I don't think that the citizens care where we get water. So, what you're asking is, is an engineering question. It's a, there's no way we can develop the property without water. RCH already said, the only reason RCH initially told us, they were going to serve 300 units and we could upgrade their system and, and we could go connect and get, because they want to be, there's a difference, the audience is confused, there's a difference between a member city and a direct connection to North Texas. You can get a direct connection to North Texas without being a member city. Right? And so, but the answer to your question, sir, is we cannot develop the property without water. So, we can't sell a house, we can't start construction, at least I'm not going to start construction unless the water has been resolved. And that's an engineering question. It's not a zoning question. It's not that we, from an engineering standpoint, from McLendon City has engineers that look at all of this, all these plans, and the city's engineers have already determined that we need another water source. So, that's our job to go get that water source. It's not going to affect the city, or not the city, it's not going to affect RCH or the demand of water. And whether that's final in three months, six months, or two years from now, doesn't matter. Development can't start until we get the water situation resolved. And we can resolve it on our own by drilling a well. I want to emphasize that. We don't need Blackland or High Point or RCH. We can drill the well and produce clean drinking water on the development.
I'm going to ask the audience to please me, try to control the comments.
So, and answer your question. I hope I've answered it. It's an engineering issue. It's not a zoning issue. It's not, there's no way that I can give you a document that says we're going to go get water from XYZ or ABC or whatever it is, because, first off, we don't know yet because we're still comparing costs. Each one of those entities that owns the water has been giving us different cost estimates on what they need to serve the property. And someone asked in the audience, well, how can Terrell get all this water? All of those customers of North Texas have contracts with North Texas. And most of those contracts say whether they can wholesale water or not wholesale water. We would, High Point wants to be the retail water provider. Soon as we decertify RCH from this area, they want to be a retail water provider so they can make the money. There's money involved in selling the water. So, that's why they want to be, all of these water corporations and companies want to sell the water on a retail basis. They make around $2 or $3 per thousand gallons. So, that's, they mark up the water, so whether or not, but they won't spend the money to come and serve the development. I have to spend that money. So, what happens is Blackland or High Point or one of them says, Huffines will serve your development, but here's, here's the bill for $5 million. Here's the bill for $7 million. Whatever it is they think that they need, whether it's elevated storage or ground storage tanks, we have to provide that. And then they provide the water. Does that make sense? There's no way I can, I mean, tell you exactly what's going to happen today because the city doesn't have any. If the city had water and this was a development in a city, we'd just go hook on and get water like we do in other developments. But the city doesn't have any, doesn't provide any. So, we're trying to solve that problem. And the best part about it is, once we solve the issue, then the city is that much further along to making the decision whether or not they want the water business. Because we're going to decertify RCH. And so, now that means that McLendon Chisholm, we can transfer that CCN to McLendon Chisholm and they can serve, or not.
So, let me brief back what I'm hearing, so I can make sure I understand it. So, the development would move forward. Construction, actual construction of homes would not start until the water sourcing was resolved, designed, and approved by the city.
That is correct.
Okay. And that's, that's a future action that would take place, and that would come to city council or would we see that as part of a plating process?
Madam Chair, members of the commission, the city requires, before a building permit is issued for the construction of a new home, that fire flow is available, that's the first thing, and that there is the capacity in the system to support the construction that is being implemented. That has to happen before the building permit is issued. That happens on all of the developments that we have in the city. So, and it happens prior to permit issuance, but after plating, in the green, the commission doesn't see it. It's an administrative function that happens at city.
So, it's handled by city council at that point? It becomes...
The council doesn't see it either because we're obligated to ensure that they have fire flow and, and that they have the capacity to provide the water. And that's an engineering question that your staff does.
You're talking specifically a building permit, though?
Right.
Not necessarily. He's, I think he's asking about the water infrastructure.
I'm referring to the more, the larger...
The infrastructure.
Decision that would be undertaken, this, like all development, this is, it takes phases.
Yes.
It takes investment. All investments are done concurrently. And so, I just, the sequencing would be, water, before any homes would be built, logically, water would be established, what the sourcing would be.
That's correct. And let me finish the question of the answer tonight. The city council would have a hand in the approval of the civil engineering...
Right.
...for the installation of the infrastructure.
I was, and then, I just wanted to make, I just wanted to understand what future role we would have with that.
Council would have a role, commission has a role as it relates to plating.
But, well, any water-related infrastructure would have to be platted in the future, correct? Not the, not the piping and things, but if you were going to put a storage tank or whatever, that would, would have to be platted as we have seen plating for RCH activities.
That's right. In fact, we did run over recently in Sonoma, Georgia.
And Mr. Kip, with the final plating process, the plat can't be filed until it's approved by both P and Z and council, and that can't be done until all the infrastructure is in the ground.
Right, right. I mean, we, we have proved a preliminary plat for this development already.
Yes, sir. The preliminary plat doesn't contain all the construction elements.
Understand.
When the final plat, infrastructure's in place, roads are there, water, sewer, everything, and it's finished, the construction's finished, we turn in the final plat to the city and comes back to you, to you guys, to the commission, and the commission approves the plan.
Commission recommends to council, council...
I'm sorry. Does that answer the word?
And then, if there, there was another question, I think I answered on sewers, so we're going directly to a sewer system. And there was another question on, help me out, please.
The police department, but that was with annexation.
So, I couldn't understand. Oh, the police department. You know, that's in the agreement and, in fact, I was just, we're going to make a presentation tomorrow night to the city council, and I noticed it wasn't in the presentation where the two acres or the land is going to be for the police station. But it doesn't need to be in Trilogy. It can be right over here in City Hall next to it. In fact, I called somebody today and said, is there any land available in this area that we could go purchase the land for the, for the police station? I don't know, I haven't even talked to the city about what land they own here, you know, whether the police station can go here. Doesn't matter to us. If the police, if the city wants to put the police station in, in the development, that's fine with us. We'll donate the land, but if they don't want to do that, that's fine with us too. So, it was just something that the city council wanted, that ability to get two acres or whatever it is for a police station. And so, there's an extra fee in the development agreement that we're paying for the police. And one thing I think that's important is in order for McLendon Chisholm to really have a police and a police force and all, they need to raise their taxes, probably to pay the policemen salaries. Now, I know that's not proper, I hate taxes. And so, but without raising the taxes, the Trilogy development will generate, and I don't have the numbers in front of me, but it's about a billion dollars in assessed value, not taxes, assessed value. When all the homes are finished and with the current tax rate, it's several million dollars a year coming into the city. So, and that's without the fees on water and sewer and other, other fees.
Can I interrupt you a second?
I'm sorry.
Try to help me. City administrator's here. Yes, yeah. Can I call you up, please? Because I'm going to, I'm going to explain what I understand and then you're going to tell me where I'm wrong for the audience.
Sure.
The developer's agreement that the Huffines group has with the city is for public safety, not specific to police, as I understand it. The services agreement, which is not in our purview, is going to be covered separately and have, could have conflicting language, I haven't read it. I'll leave that to, you know, other folks to sort out. And I also know the city is going through a process now to determine what would be the best way to provide law enforcement, what those options are. I know the mayor was working that. I'm not aware of the status of it, but there were, we're relying on county sheriff right now. At a certain point where we get too large, the county sheriff no longer, or if the county sheriff is going to provide that service, there, there's a bill to be paid to the county or creation of a DPS, which is a uniquely Texas option, or a police department. Again, not related to this specific development, but related to the broader needs of the city itself. Correct? Did I, did I describe that correctly?
On, on all the areas, I think you're very, very close to accurate, if not right on.
It's good on accurate.
The city is, the city is evaluating all the law enforcement. We're growing as a city. We're asking for commercial to come in, we're asking for other things to grow, even if it's one and a half acre lots, we're asking, and people are coming. We get phone calls daily from people that are interested in things, development options in the city. So, we would be, in my opinion, foolish not to evaluate and see what's, what do we need in year two, three, five, 10 down the road. And so, we are looking at all those, all those options and trying to evaluate when the best time is. I mean, Mr. Huffines just said, just the ad valorem value of just his development would bring in substantial amount toward the payment of, of something. So, we are evaluating all our different things. And as Mr. Coker said earlier, they're, they're all extremely good questions. Or I'm not sure how, how a lot of them have to do with the zoning issue that you have in front of you. They are good questions. I don't want to diminish that at all. I mean, we have, we have a planning and zoning commission, we have members of the, that live in the area that are very concerned that we're thinking about those and we're planning on those. If you look also in the development agreement, they've agreed to pay additional just for those police services on, on every home, on every building permit, that we can charge an additional for police services.
Public safety.
Or public safety, excuse me, I'm sorry.
Well, it's an important distinction and, and...
No, it's, it is. Yes, sir.
Is, we use loose terms sometimes and confuse ourselves. Public safety includes fire. Fire District 22 incorporates an area much larger than McLendon Chisholm. And right now, the taxpayers in McLendon Chisholm carry the overwhelming cost of carrying that fire department. Those that are serviced by the fire department due to inter, inter local agreements we have with the county and our member ci, other member cities, is how we keep relative costs down across the county.
Correct.
But it, you know, that's, it's a, and I, and I think it's important that we logically think through all of these issues and try to remove the emotion from them. Because nowhere, and I've read this agreement and understanding the agreement, nowhere does it mandate that this Huffines agreement is going to require us to have a police force. It could, well, it would potentially accelerate a process where we're going to have certain numbers of people, residents, that would require a creation of a DPS or a police force down the road, but candidly, that's almost inevitable, even if we could somehow magically stop growing completely across the city, which is also not going to happen. Not when 75% of the farm, of the land within the city itself is agriculture today. So, that's, I, I, I don't, I don't know how we collectively just stop all development. We can't freeze it. It will occur. The question is how it will occur. Which brings me, I think, to the, to the real point that we're, we're here for, which is the specific action, this action, is to approve an application to extend future zoning once a corporation occurs to create a PD for this 575 acres. That's, that's the action, the sole action we are considering. All of these are very logical questions that should be answered, but if this, independent of this action, I don't know how, how we slow this specific, or stop this specific action, given the city already has entered into an agreement, given the city has already, and the developer's already submitted a preliminary plat that we have approved, this body has approved the recommendation to council who subsequently did approve. This is just creating the ordinance. Once a future action by council to annex into the city creates a requirement for zoning, zoning being the way we exercise those rights. I am for it, and I'm for it for a very specific reason. If we don't approve it, Mr. Huffines is under his complete right to develop the property anyway, even if it's in the ETJ. Then our influence over the development would be significantly reduced, and he'll be operating under county, now working predominantly under the county subdivision regulations to guide that. Correct? And those subdivision regulations are nowhere as stringent as our subdivision regulations.
Let me clarify one thing. Our subdivision regulations apply to all the property within our, our subdivision regulations...
Right, right.
...within the ETJ. So, this property that you're considering is zoning for is in the ETJ.
We don't have zoning authorities.
But we don't, we don't have any land use regulations there.
Very good.
Okay? So, zoning, we can't regulate land use as long as it's in the ETJ. All we can regulate are two things, subdivision and...
But the subdivision implementation of those, the, they're very restrictive. We've proven that time and time again. We've proven that time and time again. When we've considered any kind of action, in fact, we've had a action before this commission for a issue down south of us where a commercial property was being built next to a residential property. And at the end of the day, it was the county's issue, right? I mean, it resolved basic issues of drainage. We had, there was no real relief that could be brought through the city. It's not in, if it is in zoning, if it's in the city, it's in zoning. If it's in zoning, opens up a whole new discussion in terms of, of oversight of any development.
Our regulatory authority within the city limits is the best.
So that is, that to me is the action we're considering. No more, no less. And while we could postpone it, I don't know what that does. I don't, I don't understand what we solve. I mean, we've listened to the discussion about water, we know that will never, if we wait for the water to be resolved and that will never, I mean, potentially could never be resolved. Cause there has to be, to get water, resolution requires having agreements. North Texas Water provides all the water. All of our water, for the most part, comes from surface reservoirs. We've built one surface reservoir in the last 40 years, federally denied, until, until Ralph Hall was able to get Otark Lake built. Now, there's the old express, I, I'm very familiar with water because my good friend's father and grandfather were the found, work to find and create North Texas water. I know all the stories. He was on the board for many, many years. Um, you know, the expression in Texas, water is for, whiskey's for drinking, water's for fighting. Uh, that will be a chronic problem. Uh, water's always gonna be a chronic problem. I don't, I don't think we'll ever solve it. Um, and I know I had that stark realization when I moved here from Arizona, when I had large cracks appear in my, back of my yard. And I had, it was because of the way the summer, summer drought, play soil, opens up cracks. You can water it till your heart's content, you'll probably never keep them. Uh, it's just a, it's a fact of life. I, and I've learned to live with it. I have, I, I enjoy watching the cracks in the back half of my two and a half acres open up all the time in the summer. Um, it's just, it's that way, it's Texas, it's the way God made this area. Uh, so I, I'm just, I'm not for postponing. This ac, this action, this postponing this action is not gonna do any good for the future of the city. It's only going to postpone it to move it a month. And the legal, we can have a whole discussion around the legal issues. The judge was very clear in throwing out the case by, see, he, very clear, on all counts. So, all counts.
No.
All counts. All counts. You can, you can come up here, we can have a legal discussion, but on all counts, said you could, he could pursue the Toma violations if desired. There's another suit that is involved, that is not involved, that, that was not part of that suit. That suit is a civil suit, very different, as I understand it. I'm, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not in the litigation.
Okay, okay.
Can we refocus on some-
We, we have to refocus, so it's, it's, I'm not-
Is there any further discussion on the motion on the table? To, does anyone have any further discussion, or are you ready to vote on the motion on the table?
If we do vote, or if the, if the commission says we are going to postpone this, what are we accomplishing? Will we have to, we will have this, at some point in time, we will have to make a decision. At some point in time, we will have to make a decision.
On the zoning, that is the only thing we are discussing.
That's the only question that is before us. Does this comply with our city's requirements of zoning, as I see it?
Correct.
Am I right on this?
Yes, that is all we are voting on. The annexation will be discussed by council tomorrow.
Now, if we, if we postpone it, what happens at our next meeting? Will we go through the same process again? What, what, what will happen at our, at our next meeting? Are we delaying the inevitable? What, what is, what, what? I, I, I understand and, and I, you know, I see kinda both sides and, and I wanna do what's best for, best for the city.
Madam Chair.
Yeah.
Let me make a comment about, now, it's not in your purview, but annexation, because it's an issue. State law says that the city council, upon a request from the property owner, can annex property. And without any action from the commission, the property comes into the city, zoned, ag, public. From a public hearing, no action by the commission, comes in, zoned, ag, state law. Okay? It gives us an option, state law gives us an option. And the option is to consider what the correct zoning audit coincident with the annexation. And that's where we're looking to the commission to make a recommendation, so it, so that the council can actually annex the property, so it doesn't have to go to ag. It can go to a planned development district that is consistent with the preliminary plat, the lots that have been identified are consistent with the development agreement and as, and the comprehensive plan. And as a result of that, we have an opportunity, as the commission, to make a recommendation for approval, because that is consistent with the plan, the development agreement, and the preliminary plat that's previously recommended to approval by this body, and ultimately approved by the council.
Are there any further questions or discussion on the motion on the table? I'm, I'm sorry ma'am, your, your time to speak was earlier.
Madam Chair, would you repeat the motion for the-
If I had written it down. It's, the motion is to table this item until next, I believe the next regularly scheduled meeting. Okay. I will take a vote. So the motion is to table until the next meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
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 The motion carries.
All opposed, I'm sorry, all opposed.
Aye, yeah, I vote nay as well. The motion carried. Okay. We will move on to item 5.2. Consider a recommendation to the city council of a specific use permit for a restaurant to be located on a 1.5 acre tract in the King Latham survey, Rockwall CAD property 0101321, generally located south of the intersection of FM 550 and State Highway 205, McLendon-Chisholm, Texas 75032. Mr. Coker, I'd ask you for your staff report. You're still off, sir. Your mic is off. There you go.
Way better. Staff is recommending approval of a specific use permit for a restaurant without a pickup window, but without, but with alcoholic beverage service.
I'm sorry, so without, with a pickup window, with, or no, without a-
No pickup window and no drive-through, but allow-
But to allow alcohol.
Alcoholic beverage service.
Okay.
And, and just to clarify, what happened with the application? I was in communication with the applicant and they informed me, after they submitted that written request, that they wanted to have alcoholic beverage service. We'd had several meetings leading up to the application, and that was one of the consistent themes. And that's why it ended up in, in the recommendation by the staff, but didn't show up as a part of the applicant's actual application. Do that answer your question about that?
Yes, sir.
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
You have questions?
No, wait, I'm gonna make a motion first. I make a motion to deny the special use permit for a restaurant to be located on 1.5 acre tract on the King Latham survey, Rockwall CAD, property number ID 101321, generally located south of the intersection of FM 550 and State Highway 205, McLendon-Chisholm, Texas 75032.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Sure. Um, as I highlighted last meeting, the application is flawed. Uh, it grants authority that's not in the application itself. So it's, um, has, that has to be fixed, in my opinion. And the applicant site plan and elevation is not consistent with city council's guidelines uh, on the drive-up window. The application elevation still shows a drive-up window and specifies a drive-up. And for those two reasons, and for the lawsuit we've just discussed, the lawsuits taught me one thing, that in all of our deliberations for the city, that we have to have attention to detail. Because at some point in the future, there could be a question about specific details. So I wanna see the application completely correct and include all of the various elements necessary, um, including alcohol. I am still, I, I understand the TECQ rules very clearly. I've read, read the rules, I've done the research on the website. TECQ, uh, or the Alcohol Commission, like the Water Commission, is more or less a rubber stamp organization. It will approve whatever the city puts in front of it. So, uh, there are, there has statewide laws, alcohol laws, but the local voters get to decide the types of alcoholic beverages that can be sold in their community through local elections. Very clear. So we can use this, a special use permit to skirt the implied intent to allow the citizens to speak. And we, if we do that, we're just, I, I believe setting up problems. We're just going through a discussion for that same specific reason. If it's important, take the time, do it appropriately, hold the election. And, uh, the, actually, the problem will be solved in a greater problem because we don't have to have a special use permit now for every applicant that comes forward. Uh, we can now have ordinance that specifies alcohol and, you know, how it can be served. And now it's, now it's a matter of how it's, how it's then applied. And I think it gets to Ms. Stone's comments and concerns. And I respect her opinion, she was on city council, she knows full well that box it's gonna potentially be opened and what, what the ramifications of it. It's my, that's my-
I'm good, thank you.
Any special questions? I apologize, you asked me ahead of time if you could address the commission. Um, if you want to do that, you can, as the applicant.
Yes, thank you. Again, Matt Atkins, Tignola Perkins, 85 Waters Creek, 7300, Allen, Texas 75013, here on the behalf of the applicant regarding this. So, uh, but I wanted to make sure, I heard that your motion is to deny. Um, so I wanted to just kinda address some of the concerns that you brought up before. Uh, the applicant is entirely willing to have no alcohol through, or off-site consumption, that's on-site consumption only. I understand the commission you have there, according to the city attorney that, um, that this is allowed through this process. So we were just going upon his recommendation, so I understand that. Um, so with regards to the pickup lane and the pickup window, um, if you look at the site plan, we, we believe the site plan works better. It, uh, provides more access out to the parking lot with the, uh, the lane there. And, um, in response to some of the concerns that you've heard, we're willing to modify the lane a little bit to widen it out at the end to allow a left turn onto, onto the road so that, um, park can circle back around. As well as widen it out to provide a bell-out lane if, um, there's folks in there. We believe this is more efficient process for pickup and such things, and things like that. Additionally, it will allow a larger pool of restaurants to come in. And yes, I understand there, there's not enough restaurants identified yet for this. It's not uncommon for commercial developments such as this to be uniformly developed and then have kind of uniform standards, so you don't have individual build-for-purpose buildings for that. Uh, provide the more uniformed facilities with the city. Um, so allowing the, the pickup window, or the pickup aisle would allow more inside, in, um, in restaurant dining. You don't have space dedicated to, to go to the restaurant parking out front. Um, so those are just a couple of the items that I know based on previous comments. I'd like to just address, and then you'd like to answer questions that you might have regarding this, if there, if there are-
Yeah, I don't have any questions specifically, I don't disagree with any of your comments. I just wanna see it resubmitted, an application resubmitted with all of that incorporated, not a patchwork approach of an application, some modification, it doesn't say alcohol, we have it in a staff report, you know, that has, the elevation shows a drive-up window, council specifically said no drive-up window. I mean, we're, and I do that because I want to avoid somebody sitting in this chair 10 years from now trying to fi, figure out what the heck was, were, were those knuckleheads thinking and why did they cast it back? Understood, that's, that's all. It, it just makes it plain.
Are there any more questions for the applicant?
Um, I just have one question. If, I'm not with the four Oregon's alcohol, it's up to the citizens, but do we have to have the citizens vote on the alcohol, or is that something that we? Can you explain that portion?
I'll give it a shot. Um, the TABC, the Texas Alcoholic Beverage Commission, in state law, provides for communities to have wet and dry elections, basically. Just to make an determination about what kind and where alcoholic beverages of any type can be sold, from beer and wine to liquor. And that, that is the most popular way of, of providing the opportunity for alcoholic beverages to be available in a community. We haven't had one of those. But the state law also provides that a restaurant with a food and beverage certificate can apply for either a private club or a mixed beverage license without having a wet, dry election. But they, they can only make that application upon approval by the city that the location that is being considered by TABC has been approved by the city, in this case, the city. In that case, the absence of an SUP for a restaurant that wanted to, to serve beer, wine, or a mixed drink at dinner would not be considered, because you have to have the city's approval to do that first. And that's why I think our process is set up the way it is. But just to make it clear, if there's an issue about the regulatory authority that the city has, I think it's a, it's a recommendation from the commission and a council decision to decide what happens.
Right.
Because, interestingly enough, while I get to do a lot with the law, I don't get to write it, I don't get to enforce it, and I don't get to vote on it. And so I'm, I'm looking for the commission to take some kind of action that helps the council then make a decision about how we ought to proceed.
And that council action would be on the SUP?
Yes.
Is there any further discussion on the motion on the table? Okay. I will call for a vote and a reminder, the motion is to, and, I'm sorry, a point of clarification. If we, because this is not a plat, if we deny this, they can come right back with a revised application next month. There's nothing special we need to do.
Actually, you can recommend denial, that'll go to the council if you're not just the council- Actually, you can recommend denial. That will go to the council. If the council.
Fair enough. We don't have any authority.
Have to, they have to overturn a recommendation or denial by a super majority. But they can approve a recommendation for denial. And then they have a choice of making that denial with prejudice or denial without prejudice. Denial without prejudice then provides for the opportunity for them to reapply and to fix all of the issues that.
But we don't need to amend our recommendation. That's a council decision.
No, you don't.
Okay. So our, our motion on the table is to recommend denial to city council. Is everyone clear? Okay. So, so a positive vote recommends denial. Okay. Can, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. So as a point of order, I need to read the next item and then we need a motion. Is that what you, I'm sorry, I can't hear you. Okay. Thank you. Okay. So item 5.3 on the agenda is a public hearing to consider the application of Oak National Development LLC regarding a request to change the existing zoning district on approximately 148.25 acres from the current zoning district classification of a planned development district Triple Creek to a new planned development district called Legacy Park Estates containing 335 single-family residential lots and a city park. The Rockwall Central Appraisal District property identification numbers are 11447 and 11438. Do I need to continue reading? Do I need to continue reading? Okay. Can we, can we do the two together? Or do I have to have motions on both?
We don't have to act on.
We don't have to act on 5.4. Okay. Okay. Can I get a motion, please?
I'll make a motion for item 5.3, that we accept the recommendation to table the public hearing until a future date.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Is there any discussion on this item?
I have one point.
Okay.
I'm willing to, if you can table it to a specific date, so if you want me to.
Well, I, I, well, let me make my comment, and we'll, we'll come back and address that. There is, for this development application, there is no, it is, has a history, but there's no developer's agreement associated with this document, with this action. So I don't know how we would ever consider extending or to change the existing zoning district for 150 or 148.25 acres from the current zoning for a PD to a new PD absent, that would include 335 single resident homes and a city park, absent any developer's agreement that addresses all of the key issues associated with design, infrastructure, responsibilities of each of the parties, drainage, public safety, all of the things we just had this conversation about. It's, it's impossible for us to make a proper decision, because I will add that it is not in compliance with the current comprehensive plan. So if it's not in compliance, and we're asking to do something to change, to approve zoning that would not, would, would not be in compliance, absent any plan, I, it's impossible for us to, in my opinion.
Will we have that by?
Unlike, that's why I would, I would, if you go to a specific date, we'd be having the same conversation. Let them get their act together and bring forward a plan. And then we can, we can proceed.
Okay.
In a rush.
Okay. Any further questions or discussion? Are you ready to vote? Okay. All in favor of tabling this item? I'm sorry. Go ahead, ma'am. And Mr. Rody seconded it.
I made a motion to second. I'm, I'm willing to amend the motion to table, to change something.
Yep. We're just tabling it to a future date, is the motion on the table. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Carries unanimously. Okay. So item 5.4 is scratched from the agenda because we did not hold a public hearing on item 5.3. Okay. So we will move on to item 5.5. Discussion and action regarding the requested approval of a final plat for the Bear Point subdivision of a 9.78 acre tract of land located on Dowell Road north of the intersection of FM 550 in the city of McLennan Chisholm extraterritorial jurisdiction. Can I get a motion on this?
I'll make a motion to postpone consideration of this plat request and require the applicant to go back to the city planner to address the, did I get it count right here? Fifteen variances that need to be addressed prior to consideration of the final plat.
Go ahead, Mr. Coker.
All right. So this is a plat. Remember that plats are ministerial in nature. So you only have three choices. You can approve the plat with no conditions. You can approve the plat with conditions, and I've listed them specifically in the docket, and I've recommended approval subject to compliance with the conditions. Or you can disapprove. And you can disapprove as long as you identify the areas where they failed to comply with the regulations, which is the list that I have in this document. So you can't postpone it because you have a 30-day shot clock.
All right. I'll withdraw my motion and remake it. I make, I make a motion to deny the request for the final plat for item 5.5, based on the 15 staff recommendations where the plat does not, has significant considerations that need to be addressed.
Can I get a second on that motion?
Second.
Okay. Is there any further discussion? Then I will call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That carries unanimously. All right. The next item on the agenda is adjournment, I believe, our next meeting, just to clarify, is May 20, oh, was it?
May 16. Oh, no.
Was it the 16th?
May 16.
Well, she knows that because we put it in the agenda for the postponement of the.
That's what I was looking at. Okay. Okay. Can I get a motion for adjournment? I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. We will adjourn at 8:38.